Let's come to order and welcome to our special called meeting on the building program, which we have every year at about this time, just to sort of get an update of where we are, where we're going, make any adjustments to the plan that we need. So it's always a good time for us to devote our attention exclusively to this topic. So with that, Mr. Gill, take it away.
Okay, first thing we want to do is look at the building plan, the two-year building plan, and noted under there is that we also have attached three-year enrollment. And it, you know, it's obviously somewhat pertinent to the building plan, but also something that you could reference for future information. So if you'll turn to the spreadsheet, we'll start there. And once we've done this, we'll come back and Mr. Clardy has some reports to make. I don't think there's even been any change in this, with the exception of David Urey renovation. I think that's the only change. But if you look at the top part of the sheet, schools opening in August, obviously part of the plan was to open Oakville Middle, Buchanan Middle, Buchanan Land for future high schools, Central Middle renovation, McFadden renovation, major capital repairs fund for 2010, and all that's been completed, and that was completed at a cost of $61,57,250. All right, in June of 2011, we worked on the campus school renovation, we funded that. We also finished up McFadden renovation, and we approved our, out of our capital repairs fund, we did projects that year. Mr. Clardy's got information specifically what we did that year, and he'll reference that in just a second. One of the things that we weren't able to pull off was the addition of bleachers and restrooms at Smyrna and Laverne High School, and that was a result of the fact that I think we borrowed $50 million for Stewart's Creek High in Eagleville, and obviously we were all hoping to get it at 49 million, where we could take a million and do those two projects. However, that didn't come to fruition. So as a result, we didn't get that done. Now, June of 2012, we'll begin our new major capital repairs, and Mr. Clardy presented, I believe, at the last board meeting, I believe, that the capital projects that we would undertake, and he's going to report on those in a few minutes, right?
Right, yes.
Okay. Now, to the next line, back to Stewart's Creek High School, October the 10th, we have the design. June of 2011, we started construction, and in August 2013, we are scheduled to open. And the status of that is we're a little ahead of schedule. Mr. Clardy will give you a subsequent report. Eagleville High School, if you recall, we started the design in October of, last October, 2011, and we started construction, and we anticipate moving in in August this fall. It's coming along nicely, and Mr. Clardy will give you a report on that. One of the things that we had intended to do out of this year's major capital repairs fund was to do David Urey. However, I think it's the first renovation, we've had to push back. We had to do that because we had some roofs and other things that was just absolutely imperative that we get done out of this year's major capital project fund, and so Urey will be pushed back. Hopefully, we'll start on that, I guess, next summer and have that done, or... How much of that do we do during the course of the year, Gary? None, some?
We can get the majority of it done during the summer if we can have it ready to go.
Okay. So hopefully, we'll get some design work done on that and get started and get that finished as quickly as possible. And then, and obviously, in June of next year, or next spring, about this time, you'll be planning for your follow-up year of major capital repairs fund of $1,620,000. Jeff, would you tell me, and we didn't discuss this this morning, why is it reflecting 2.3 million last year and only 1.6 million next year?
If you add the renovation to it.
Okay. And that's 679, that totals that, okay. So there, but, just to emphasize, renovations come from the, out of the major capital repairs fund, and so again, we're pushing Urey back. Now, we're not going to do any construction, we don't have any schools to be constructed this year. Now, what our hope was, and this is the reason we provide you with three-year enrollment figures, and it's amazing, I'll say this in advance, we're going over that, is you look at the numbers, you're going to see over the course of the last several years, we've done a pretty doggone good job rezoning and putting kids where they are, because very few schools are overcrowded, but several of them are near overcrowded. But I think that's a tribute to all of us. So as we look at that, we've got, we've got to start looking for land, probably this fall, if we are to build an elementary school in the Laverne-Smyrna area. As you recall, we had discussed, we had discussed building it maybe between Barfield, Rockvale, Christiana, to accommodate those areas. But the city is going to open a school in the west part of Murfreesboro to accommodate growth out here, and that probably will offer us relief, too. That's scheduled to open in 2014. If it weren't for that, the county school might take precedent over the Smyrna-Laverne area, but right now, we, as we've discussed this two or three times, we still think that Smyrna-Laverne is probably the place to go with the next elementary school. And if you look on this, if you flip back to the next page, there's a sheet there, and we kind of highlighted the Smyrna schools, and it's pretty interesting, in particular, Laverne is not really growing. I guess maybe because it's built out, but starting with Cedar Grove, which, you know, serves several students from Laverne and some from Smyrna, it's been pretty stable for the last three years, 880, 879, 879. These are based on third month enrollment figures. David Urey's gone up, they use portables now, I don't know how many, six, I believe. You know, Mr. Clardy?
I'll look, right.
That's all right. Something like six or eight. So they've gone up by approximately 80, 80, 89 students over the last couple, three years. John Comas added 11. Surprisingly, Laverne laced it down by 52 students, but I'd remind you, that whole area's very transient, there's people moving in and moving out on a consistent basis. Laverne Primary is up 63. Smyrna, Rock Springs is, you know, went from 910 two years ago to 914, so there's not much change there. Waldron's pretty much the same. Smyrna Elementary's into portable business again, even though we added 14 or 15 classes, they picked up 70 kids in the last couple of years. Smyrna Primary's picked up 47. Stewart's Creek's pretty well leveled out, there's not much growth there. Stewart'sboro's got 908, but they still have four portables in use, and also Thermaphraxis is about the same. But the reality of all this is, is that if there is an elementary school built, it probably needs to go there, but I don't think, I mean, I think there's a potential to even put it off another year unless we get a real boom in any given area in the county. So, I mean, I think it would be wise on the board's part, hang on one second, to probably in four or five months after next school year starts, and we get new numbers, to go back and look at those numbers, because we may want to change where that school goes. Yes, sir.
How many traditional students are at Thermaphraxis? Do you know, what percentage?
Don, you know?
It's two classes for grade K through F, so you know, you're looking at 128.
Forty nine, six grades, 230.
Forty five, actually, you can add up there.
So you've probably got 250 kids, something like that.
So about a third are traditional, right?
Yeah. That's a good question. But if you look at the area, look at, looking at the Barfield area schools, of course, Blackman, Blackman is up to 1,003, and Brown's Chapel is at 687, they've stayed some growth. Of course, if, worst-case scenario, some kids from, you know, those two zones obviously butt up against each other, if that's too bad, you could, you know, there's plenty of room at Brown's Chapel, zone a few students over there, but I know, nobody wants to rezon. Christiana Elementary's at 692, they're down, they've dropped enrollment the last two years. And of course, Kittrel, you know, Kittrel's way down. And worst-case scenario, future boards could move a few Christiana kids over there, but I don't think it's going to become necessary for a good while. And we're about to take care of our high school needs, and what I was saying a few minutes ago, I think maybe in three, four, or five months, you may want to reexamine the numbers again and see if, see if that school ought to go somewhere else. Otherwise, I suggest you stick to the same plan, which is tentatively to open an elementary school in 2014. That would be at a cost of probably $24,700, including land acquisition, the works out the door, Steve Sandler likes to say. Also, I mean, we kind of committed to doing Eagleville High School addition and opening it in 2014. That would be an additional 5.3 million, that would get classrooms, cafeteria, auditorium. We had pushed, we pushed back Smyrna Primary so that it would be complete in 2014. And of course, you've got your major capital repairs. And then, you know, it's just a stretch, there's no way we can project what to do in 2015, but we did put the elementary in West Murfreesboro. There will eventually have to be a middle school in that Smyrna area, I believe, because, let's see, Laverne, let's see, Laverne Middle's at 986, Rock Springs at about 9, they're at 955, and Smyrna Middle is at 968. So the reality is, the middle school could even have to go before the elementary school, but I think it's two years out. You still got room at Stewart's Creek Middle, and there really aren't any portables in use there, I don't believe, at any of those middle schools. So worst-case scenario, you could use a portable or two to get by for two or three, for a year or so. So we're pretty much where we were last year at this time, with respect to our plan.
Where's the city building its schools? Is it Joby Jackson, or have they picked a side, or?
I don't think they have land yet, do they?
I don't think so.
Uh-uh. Jeff, do you know? I know you-
I'm not aware that they-
You may have got four, yeah.
Tim?
Notice Riverdale's number's down by 210, that's surprising to me. What would have caused that?
Well, two years ago, when we rezoned, we zoned, a lot of Riverdale's zoned over to Blackman. And we gave them an option of what, staying at Riverdale, but apparently they, you know, they chose to go to Blackman, because Blackman's, what's Blackman at, 22 plus?
22, yeah, 64.
See, and Stewart's Creek will give Blackman that relief.
Okay.
So I guess, we recommend that you adopt this plan as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Clardy, have they given a timetable on Joby Jackson?
I haven't seen anything on it.
But the next leg is from about the interstate to 231, and then the following leg is from 41 over to John Bragg, is that the way it is?
Yes, sir, that's the way it was. I haven't looked at it in some time.
So will that crisscross through Kittrel and Las Casas, I mean, as far as those school zones, as far as building it up?
That'll make Quitworth Buchanan more accessible from those areas.
From the east side.
Yeah.
But they haven't purchased the rightways out there yet.
No, they haven't.
I don't think they have.
I didn't know what the timetable was on that. It had been set back a couple of times, and I didn't know where they still were.
I know they're working on from 231 over right now, in that, throughout subdivision down there, area.
Have they already purchased the-
I don't know if they purchased the property beyond the east of that or not.
Now, is that, that construction all city dollars, or is that DOT and city partnership?
Partnership, yeah.
I think it is, part of the county, part of the city.
Yeah.
But I mean, the DOT is not involved in it, right?
I don't think they are, just only where it intersects their road.
Okay. What's pretty interesting, though, you know, a few years back, the city and the county, for that matter, had projected enormous growth at Highway 99. You remember, they were talking about 10,000 houses built out there, and yet, if you look at Rockvale Middle, of course, we moved a lot of the Rockvale Middle kids to Christiana, and maybe something to Blackman, too, but they've dropped, they're almost dropped down to 771, they were at 842 years ago.
There's a ton of lots out, veterans.
Yeah, just waiting to be developed, yeah.
But there's no moving on, movement yet.
Right.
The economy's still not where it should be, or where we'd like it to be, I guess.
Right.
That's the reason, thing they've put on hold.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no, motion's adopted.
Mr. Clardy's got some status updates on Eagleville and Rockvale, go ahead, Mr. Clardy.
Okay. First thing is Eagleville, I have some photos here, but that job is really beginning to move now, particularly with the dry weather. We have all the foundations in, we're setting barge joists on top of the basement there now. I think they've managing so they can pour that slab on top to get the bottom in the dry, and be working in both places at the same time. Here's a picture of where they're roughing in the slab, and these, when these jobs are moving like this, these pictures are out of date in about two days, so. The elevator pit, blocks going up on the inside, which are now complete, waterproofing on the exterior of the basement wall, complete interior walls, bricks going up on the outside, and barge joists being set. See the stringers, steel stringers in for stairs and that type of thing. So they'll be putting the pan on that, on this entire thing, and pouring that slab within the next few days. Rockvale Elementary School re-roof, which is a capital improvement, is about 40% complete at this time, and I will discuss the capital improvement down toward the end of my presentation. You can see, as Mr. Gill had said the other night, we've moved to this white membrane roofing now, and our membrane to prevent solar gain and keep from having to do so much cooling in spring and summer and early fall. It helps considerably to have white roof up there in energy cost.
You wonder why it took them so long to figure that out? I mean, not that I did either, I'm just curious. A lot of people work in the roofing industry.
I don't know, I think it took them a while to come up with a white material that would stand the UV rays and that type of thing, I think that's what the problem was. And most of this stuff is petroleum-based, so you have, you know, with the UV rays, it depletes and gets, comes apart pretty quickly, so they've finally developed some materials that last. This is an interesting picture because of the fact that this, and we've gone back in many, many of our buildings where walls are above roofs, and put membrane roofing on those and painted them to keep. As you might recall, several years ago, we had, you'd get a rain that was blowing in, it soaked the entire wall perimeter of a gym or something, and be running down on the inside, so we've gotten that problem under control over the last few years. More roofing, this is a membrane that's up over the block wall. Then at Stewart's Creek High School, we had a excellent meeting out there with Health Ed the other day, and that job is really moving. We're still in the process of laying blocks, we're setting steel joists, most of the footings are in the ground now, with the exception of a few. We're pouring slab on the ground and also on the top. The gym walls are up, they're getting ready to pour the slab before the bleachers in there. We hope to have it under roof by the end of the summer, and so they can go through the winter working on the inside of the building. We're starting grading, I think, next week on the athletic facility. We've finally wised up this year and put in specs that we want a year's growth on the fields and sods, so they'll try to get those done this summer, so next summer, they'll have a year's growth on them, so they can get in and start playing on them immediately.
You know, Gary, John, what's John's last name?
Hooker.
Yeah, John, he told me one time when I was out there a few weeks back about happening, and I'm sure you don't know the answer to this, but it was incredible, the number of blocks that'll be laid on that project. Do you have any idea?
I don't really.
I mean, it was just my, I thought, it was pretty fascinating, I'm gonna pass it on, but I can't remember.
I don't think I'm gonna sleep very good, I'll find out.
I'll just throw one out there, they won't know the difference.
We could have a contest, have some-
Well, that's good, yeah, we could do that, and I'll track the information down tomorrow and send out an email.
Then we'd have to count them all, one for one, to make sure it's the accurate one.
Yeah.
So here's some pictures of them pouring slab in the cafeteria area. There's a pump, this is another area on site where they're pouring slab, and one of the back wings. You can see the masonry's going up and scaffolding up above it, and the gym, concrete block 42 feet above finished elevation of the floor, so it's a large building. More masonry going on, you notice the flashing above the windows there to keep water from The geothermal wells are going in, we're getting close, I think, we still got, there's 16 zones that are 90% complete, and we're working on three zones now, and have four zones after that, and all of our geothermal will be complete.
Question, the piping that comes out of the well?
Yes, sir.
What do they do, link those together somehow?
It goes into a manifold, those go down and come back out.
Okay.
And the refrigerant or the liquid travels through that, and it goes down and it takes on the temperature of the water, there's a heat exchange that goes on, or I mean, of the earth temperature down below, and some of the wells may have water, some of them may not.
I think it's, they tell me it's 55 degrees constant.
It is, it's like being in a cave.
Right, right.
But those all tied together in a manifold up on top so that they can, the water flows through them, or the liquid does, and comes back, and then that temperature is pulled off of that through some exchangers and put out into the system.
Pretty good, I hear. You mean a dry hole there is not a problem?
It's not, because it's, the temperature of the earth is-
Well, is it as efficient as the ones with water in them, or are they steady on that?
There's not a, not really a big difference, because water takes on the temperature of the earth down there.
It's 85, but I was just thinking about cold water.
Feels a lot colder than air of the same temperature, yeah.
Cold dirt is cold dirt. One of the-
55 degrees is 55 degrees, where it'd be dirt or water, but I just wanted-
One of the things that concerned me when we were first looking at these was the heat latency of the soil. If you had some really, really hot years, for five or six years in a row, the earth would take on the temperature of the air more, as it's taking the heat out of the circulation and putting a lower temperature back in, but there hasn't been any problem like that, and people with wells as deep as we're going, which are 300 feet or so, we don't have that problem.
I've never watered a well that deep.
So, I'm fascinated by this, didn't think much to fascinate me, I guess, but what's the additional cost to doing this geothermal, and then what's the savings benefit that comes from it, and obviously, there is, there are both.
Well, there's a, for school, it's a couple million dollars per school, and when you get into the bigger schools, it could be as much as three, three and a half. But one of the things that we've managed to do is we've managed to get the geothermal, the metal float roof, and some other items, actually cheaper than what people are building standard school for around the state of Tennessee, without geothermal and the roofs on them. So, and I think that goes back to the work we've put in on so many different areas of decreasing the volume inside the building, and using similar members, size members, and all those kinds of things. And the payback on this, on the geothermal is usually five to seven years.
I think ours is closer to five, though.
Yeah, it is.
And to Jeff?
Yes, sir.
But I mean, if we're getting it for less than what we could do with the traditional, aren't we getting the payback immediately?
Well, we are immediately, but if we built traditional, we would still be a lot cheaper. But, but when we're getting prices cheaper than all of our neighbors around, and, you know, their traditional's costing higher than what our float roofs and geothermal are, so.
Their credit rating may not be as good as ours, do you think?
What's that?
Their credit, credit rating might not be as good.
Well, I think it has to do with building the same building over and over, and fitting it to the site is the only change in it. The 3% that we're getting on the architect's fees is cheap compared to the 5 and 6% that a lot of the other counties-
The design's a little more simple than it used to be, and what others do, I mean, as you, you've said before.
Jeff, one second.
I just, I have gotten this question.
I, I just, I have gotten this question periodically. When we first looked at geothermal, the payback period was at least double what we're looking at. It wasn't economically viable initially, the costs were so much higher.
But we've disproved that, in that we've had about a five-year payback.
Yeah, but initially.
Technology's got a little.
And just the, we've gotten smarter as we've put these things in too because, for instance, the sites have been so messy in previous jobs that we finally started bringing the drill rigs in on tracks. We've tried to channel the water away that they use for the drilling and those kinds of things. So we, the sites are a lot better and a lot easier to get around on as we've gone through. More pictures of the masonry, and that's the main thing you see out there now is just masonry. Then we move on to Homer Pitterd School and we're, we'll be wrapping up the entire obligation that the school board has to purpose for, in our agreement with them, or MTSU, at the end of the summer, in August. We have the top floor restroom completed and we've moved into the other ones now. And as soon as school's out, we'll move to outside of the building and start cleaning that up and, and get that completed. You can see the plumbing going in in the restroom. And that's what the main part of the inside of the building is, is the restroom stuff. All plumbing, and here's one of the finished restrooms with the exception of the floor being finished. And if you were in those before you see these.
That is a major improvement.
Yeah, absolutely.
Some of the plastic partitions.
But the floors are gonna be redone in there, right?
Yes. Capital improvement, two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve. Kettrel Sewer, which was complete, major re-roofing of McFadden, Buchanan, Smyrna Primary and Walter Hill are complete, and we're thirty-five percent on Rockvale Elementary right now. Renovation, McFadden is complete. Campus school is in progress. And the HVAC for the one wing, the ed packs that are coming in for Smyrna High School will arrive next week and will start sequencing those in to try to get those finished. And I, I believe that wraps up Oakland, Riverdale, Smyrna and LeBurn, those old air conditioners that we called them so much headache. Capital improvements for this next fiscal year. Roofing, Las Cassas Elementary, Smyrna Middle and the ballasted section of Smyrna Primary. And the total of those three roofs comes to one point six million. Paving, you know, the access road that goes to Wilton Elementary. We, we're going to do quite a bit of work on that this year. If we put it off and put it off, so that's something that Mr. Gill was referring to that we've gotta go back and pick up some stuff. Here at the central office, we're out parking, we're out also space on the inside, but so we're gonna do a little parking out here. Blackman High School, we need to add some parking in some areas out there. And then Central Magnet, I've got a hundred and twenty-five thousand in there to do some extra parking over there. If you recall, Dr. Ash and we'd kinda looked at that on the original project, but we had to cut it out due to fund. And then, Las Cassas Elementary Sewer. We're going to put in a similar system that we put in out Kettrel this year. That'll take those two totally out, that'll remove our obligation from the state with those two failing systems that we've had there. Then windows, at hallway, this is one of our last schools where we're putting in the energy efficient windows and geol, I mean, the thermopane windows. And this won't totally cover it, but it was all that we could get, so we'll have to have a little bit next year to finish that project up. And that completes my report.
A very good report, Mr. Clardy.
Good job, good job.
Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And it's Homer Pitterd School, is it on the historical register?
Yes, sir, it is, we almost pulled our hair out with the state. That's why I don't have any. When we were doing design originally on that, not only the historical society, but the state historical society and also the Board of Regents, we had to deal with.
Is, is McFadden getting close to being at the age that it could be on, on that?
How old is McFadden? You know?
The last rebuild was like in the forties. That's the last plaque, after the fire, nineteen thirty-eight was when they rebuilt that middle section.
McFadden School, that campus is much older than that. But that building itself, nineteen thirty-eight.
I would like to encourage the board members to go by there and just take a look at that school because it's amazing what the work, how it has lifted that school out of where it was. And it's just total different feeling walking on the inside of it now. It's clean, it has a ceiling in all the hallways and the roof's in good shape. It's not leaking water through the walls now, so.
Elevator work caused us a lot of grief about eight years ago.
Other questions, comments? All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Gill, anything else?
Yeah, we've got number three in the packet, Rock Springs Middle School dugouts and batting cage. Principal Chris Tredway has requested permission to build both baseball and softball dugouts and a batting cage at Rock Springs Middle School. These will be constructed on the hill above the school at the existing ball field at no cost to the board. There are no gender equity issues since the girls' softball team will be allowed to use a batting cage. Recommend that you construct a baseball, softball duggets and dugouts and a batting cage at Rock Springs Middle School at no cost to the board as presented.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion's adopted.
Speaking of that, what, did you have a chance to go out to Oakland Middle and look at that?
We actually did, we ran it, we were out there today. You know, I think we're in compliance with the city requires. The only solution I see is what Mr. Hodge said the other night, I mean, conceivably could, first of all, the burn taken is there, the trees are planted. There will be growth over the course of the years that will provide some kind of blockage to keep foul balls, also offer privacy to the residents. Beyond that, I don't think it's, it's not doable to move that field around. Even if you flipped it, you'd still have home runs being hit in people's backyards. The only other option would be to set a couple tall posts and maybe run a, run a cable and drop a screen, some sort of screen. Of course, that's not gonna be very, very pretty for the neighbors, so I don't know if they'd be interested in that, but other than that, I don't see that there's an option.
What you mean for the neighbors?
You know, to put it along the left field fence and around the back of the batting cage, it would probably prevent foul balls from going in their yard or maybe hitting their house, but that's gonna be, when they sit on their back porch, that's gonna be their visual.
Oh, that problem is on the backstop.
Well.
I understand what you're saying, but that's where your only problem's coming from, it looks like.
Well, I mean, if you hit a foul ball over the third baseline or you.
I understand.
I mean, yeah, I'd say your biggest problem is home plate, but I mean, but the reality is, if, if somebody pulls a foul down the left field line, it's still gonna wind up somebody's backyard.
Also, the city called me this week on that and a truck, they had been, they have some porta-potties out there and so the truck's been driving across the curb and broken up the sidewalk there. So we're in the process of putting in an apron for, to get in and back and forth off the road there without having a problem with that right now. They're, the city's satisfied.
Okay, Tim?
Mr. Reed, where are we as far as liability is concerned? If, if a foul ball were to go back in someone's yard and hurt someone?
Well, we're not the one hitting the foul ball, so I don't know there's any liability on the school board at all in that case.
But if one of our eighth graders hits a foul ball and it lands on a kid's head, we don't have any liability?
If you're playing, there's all kinds of issues that you get into with respect to ball games. So you have players in the field who are playing ball and they're, they're, they usually, you know, assume some risk about hitting, getting hit by balls. So that can happen as part of the game. So the Board of Education cannot be responsible if someone is hit by a ball while they're playing a softball game.
I'm talking about if a foul ball goes back into this, in a, in a neighborhood yard, in a back, in a backyard and somebody's sitting back there enjoying a lemonade and they get whacked across the head.
Every case turns on its own, so we'd have to look at the specific facts abstract of that particular case. So you can't make some broad statement with respect to the board being automatically liable in that situation. You may not be liable to that situation. So each, each situation turns on its own facts. So we can't make a broad proposition that the board would be liable in such a situation.
Wayne?
I would think the suggestion that Mr. Hodge made about the net above the backstop would, would stop the majority of foul balls. But I know there's gonna be fouls down the third baseline, but I think the pop-ups seemed to be the thing that was most disconcerting for that gentleman. So maybe if we could find a way to, to net the top of that backstop, that might cure most of the issue.
Well, so what, do you have a proposal or you're mulling it over or just leave it as it is?
I'll tell you what we'll do, let he, let Mr. Clardy, we looked at this morning, we did mull over a few thoughts and how about if I come back to the next.
That'd be fun.
Board meet Tuesday night, that'd give us another thing on the agenda.
We might have to add the work session.
Bring it, meeting after that. Yeah, we'll bring a recommendation. And also, matter of fact, today when we left there, he said he would, he would, Mr. Clardy said he'd do some investigation with respect to cost. So maybe we'll come back with two, three cost options and, and something that's, you know, has a little eye peel and will further hack off the neighborhood.
But it sounds like we don't really have to do anything from what you said.
No, I don't think we do.
Okay. Seems to be the end of the agenda, are there other?
Got two things for you, one is with regards to the request for a board here, through the packet there. And also pursuant to your request last night, here is the plan for zoning Stewart's Creek High School. That's there too. It's the one we gave you two or three months ago.
Okay.
Forgot we gave you.
I noticed that plan's coming after your retirement.
Well, I wanted to help. Mr. Oldham insisted that I let him do it.
Did he?
Might get a few of calls.
Yeah. Anybody okay with this schedule? Okay, thank you for reminding us about that. Mr. Gill?
Yeah.
Was that, is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
Other issues? All right, well, thank you, Mr. Gill, Mr. Clardy, and where's Jerry?